Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, July 22, 2025 Regular Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with all council members present tonight. So I just want to take a moment to acknowledge our agenda item that is on our only business item, rather, that's on the agenda for tonight, which is the approval of a resolution regarding council's action on the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative Ordinance Concerning Labor Standards for Certain Employees. So I do just want to say that there are many of us that are very, very passionate about this issue, no matter where we fall on it. So I just want to acknowledge that there is a lot of energy, intense energy, in the room. So I'm going to ask us all to take a breath. We're one community that cares very deeply about this issue regardless of where we stand on it, and I just want us to keep that perspective as we go through our evening tonight. So with that, I will move on to public comment and turn it over to the Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, and we have to pass the agenda. So with that, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. Mayor Proten.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So a couple of housekeeping things for public comment tonight is, I'll just look over Susan. Thanks, Susan. Sounds like, are we still collecting names? I'm seeing folks signing in over there.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, so hopefully folks that are signing in at the table knows that we're not collecting any more public comment.
There's no more sign-up sheets out there, but we do have written public comment that we would accept.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. All right, so a couple of housekeeping things is we have some virtual and some in-person public comment, and since you've made the trip here, we're going to go ahead and honor in-person public comment first, followed by virtual. Each public commenter gets two minutes for the in-person folks. The clock is right there to my right, and when you hear your name being called up, you'll step on the podium, and the mic is already functioning, so you just begin talking, and then your time will start. And then when you're at the last 30 seconds, you'll see a yellow light come on just to signify to please start wrapping up your comments, and then when it's read, your comments will have been concluded. I'm going to call a few names so that you can hear for your name and know to get in queue. And I've noticed that not very many people put their phonetic spelling in, so I'm just going to ask that if I do mispronounce your name, please do forgive me and just clarify what your name is for the record when you get to the podium. All right, so with that, we have Tom Crawford, followed by Marissa Wolf, followed by Rose Gunderson.
Hello, good evening, or good afternoon, as the case may be. My name is Tom Crawford. I serve as Board President of Thurston Climate Action Team. We have deeply appreciated our partnership with city staff and elected officials over the past several years to advocate for and develop programs both within the city and regionally throughout the county aimed at addressing the climate crisis. Thank you all so for considering the Workers' Bill of Rights proposal this evening. TCAT has enthusiastically endorsed this proposal because we know that the climate goals established for our region in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan cannot be achieved without workers. Workers are needed to retrofit our homes and businesses for energy efficiency, to provide us with clean, affordable energy, drive our buses, create and maintain new transportation solutions like safe, protected bike and pedestrian paths, and so many other things. These workers deserve decent pay and a healthy, supportive working environment, so I hope you will join TCAT in supporting this measure. Thank you for your service and for your time and attention to this important topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Marissa Wolf?
Thank you, good evening. I'm Marissa Wolf with Mud Bay. Our business started in 1988 when my mom bought a feed store on Mud Bay Road. We sell pet food and supplies in stores in Washington and Oregon. Our company is owned by our family, a few friends, and our employees. We're passionate about being a good employer. We provide schedules three weeks in advance. We provide medical, dental, and vision insurance to our full-time employees, a generous staff discount, paid time off, and a 401(k) match. We provide security buttons for employees when they work alone. During the last few years, the costs and the complexities of being in business have increased dramatically. Because of increased costs, we have had to make cutbacks, including reducing store staffing levels by more than 20%. We have 140 fewer employees than we did three years ago with the same number of stores. Our employees used to be almost all full-time. We've had to shorten shift lengths and hire part-time. Many of our stores now open and close with only one person. Mud Bay has a solid record of staying ahead of minimum wages, of providing good benefits and safe working conditions, but the cost and complexity of doing business is increasing quickly. We are struggling to keep up. We're trying to compete with the Goliaths like Chewy and Amazon. Chewy is shipping products into our communities, but they are not providing jobs for our residents and we are. Please consider placing the petition on the ballot so the public has time to review and assess the consequences and impacts. Let's find the right balance between great jobs for people and the survival of our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose Gunderson, followed by Steve Segal, followed by Jeff Dukes.
I'm Rose Gunderson with Washington Retail Association. This is a complex initiative that really our voters deserve more time to understand how it will ripple through the economy and our community. I'm here to highlight retail's critical role in Olympia's economy and to share three main concerns retailers and employers have in our community. Retail is the lifeline of Olympia's economy. Forty-three percent of our city's budget comes from sales and use tax. Of all the retail sales collected in our county, 24% is from our city, the largest share of any cities in this county. These revenues keep our city running and our community thrive. The three concerns are: the scope of cover employers is the most expansive in the whole country; similar measures only cover retailers and hospitality; this is going to cover healthcare, nonprofits, franchises, and those who provide emergency services; nobody schedules heart attacks; reduced access to critical service will divert businesses from investing in Olympia. The second concern is the duplicative safety measures. These are duplicate states' OSHA requirements and the state's panic button law. The city lacks the expertise and resources to develop and enforce these additional rules. Let the state do it. The third one is the civil action that undermines due process, what we highly value. The provision will force employers to prove their innocence in private lawsuits while workers only have to provide little evidence to bring the lawsuit. Without clear rules and guidance, employers are forced to do a lot of burdensome paperwork in order to maintain compliance and their innocence. From cases in the experiment in Seattle, many employers just settled just to stop the losses on continuation time exhaustion and legal expenses. So please give it more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Segal?
My name's Steve Segal. All of you ran on platforms of addressing homelessness problem and supporting working families. It was a long struggle to achieve a $15-an-hour minimum wage, and by the time we did, it was already out of date. The Workers' Bill of Rights helps those most at risk of losing their housing because they can't afford rent increases. In Olympia, it's a 5% increase, but it can be up to 10% outside of the city. Let's be real, who's most at risk to get the biggest rent increase? And isn't it better to prevent people from falling into homelessness than trying to clean out the camps later? Who will step up and have their Profile of Courage moment tonight? You have the opportunity to accomplish some landmark policy here. Passing it off to the voter is effectively a no vote. I hope I'm wrong, but I'm afraid if this goes to the voter, it will lose because Americans love nothing more than to pass judgment on who is deserving of an appropriate wage. Would a majority of voters approve of your salary? Are you willing to put that to a vote? Liberal California passed Prop 8 in 2008 outlawing gay marriage. It was subsequently overturned by the courts, but is illustrative of why important policy changes need to come from strong political leadership. It's why we have representative democracy. Same thing for the 1964 Civil Rights Act. We couldn't leave that to the states to decide, or it would never happen. President Johnson said, "What's the point of having power if you're not willing to exercise it?" If this goes to the voters, a ton of corporate money will flow to make sure that free-market capitalism is protected in Olympia because we don't want workers at the bottom to get a fair deal. I hope I'm wrong, but money and bias usually wins. Please do the right thing and pass the Workers' Bill of Rights tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Dukes?
Hi, can you hear me? I'm Jeff Dukes. My wife and I own and operate Cascadia Grill and Juju's Frozen Custard downtown. I was going through the lists on the sign-up lists, and I saw that it was about evenly divided between those who are for and against, which by definition is divisive. All I'm asking for, and I'm only speaking on behalf of my industry, the full-service restaurant industry, is that there's an impact study done before you enact this, that you're giving the voters the information they need to make a decision, a smart decision. You know, I watch these young people outside with their signs and protect the workers, which implies that somehow as owners that we're not already protecting the workers, and I hate that because I'm not Jeff Bezos, you know, I'm a small business owner. But it's that kind of activism which has changed the country for the better. That's the kind of activism that's given us, you know, child labor laws, a woman's right to vote, and it's important, and that's a smart thing to do. But sometimes the pendulum swings so far to the society of the workers at the expense of the small business owners. And if you drive through downtown, just drive through downtown, block by block, it's one small business owner after another. I don't know what percentage of the city is corporate, but it's a very small percentage. And we now, I want to tell these young people to, they shouldn't be running around with flags, they've already won the battle. Washington has the highest-paid service industry sector in the country, number one, ahead of Hawaii, California states with higher cost of living. And conversely, we have the service industry sector ownership with the smallest profit margins in the country, not number two, or three, or four, the worst in the country. And it's a struggle, so all I want to do is give the voters the information they need to make a sound decision on how this is going to impact businesses. And I went through myself and did one. I'm going to pass this to each one of you on my way out of here, just as some bullet point information on how this is going to impact the small business owner financially in Olympia. Thank you.
Yeah, you can go ahead and give it to Councilmember Cooper. Thank you. All right, we have Nicole Buttigan, followed by Will Calico, followed by April Miller.
My husband Jim and I have owned small restaurants in Olympia for over 20 years. I have a proven track record of success in currently own Swing and The Lucky Lunchbox. By owning both of these businesses, I have been able to support my large household and need to maintain my income and financial obligations just like my employees. I absolutely support workers' rights and fair wages and safe working conditions for all employees. However, the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative has many flaws and is lacking specific details necessary for it to be successful. I work on shift with my employees every night. I do this to support my staff because they are vital to my business being successful. A flat increase of minimum wage with no regard to tips will hurt every small, full-service restaurant in Olympia. Businesses must be allowed to have time to think of creative solutions to this problem if it should pass the ballot in November. Immediately adopting this initiative without voter consent is reckless and unnecessary. Restaurants need time to find out if they need to raise prices, add a service charge, or completely change their business model. Other businesses will have different needs, and the core problem with this initiative is that it lumps together different types of businesses such as boutique, small restaurants, with huge corporations regardless of income earned, profit made, or hours of operation. The initiative is flawed, many specific details are missing. What is the actual cost of implementation, enforcement, and maintenance of this initiative if it passes? Who is overseeing the implementation? The city? Who is that specifically? Has a fiscal note been submitted? Voters have the right to research and vote no on this initiative in November to support local, full-service restaurants in Olympia. In the future, I would support an initiative that brings small business owners to the table to participate in that discussion. It is shocking to me that a council that espouses equity as one of the highest values supports a bill from a grocery union and Tacoma Socialist Democratic Party that never engage small business owners in discussion. We have been excluded from this process. Let's work together to find solutions and continue to build a stronger Olympia community.
Thank you, Nicole. So before we move on for the remainder of public comment, and I meant to do this at the top, but there are a lot of logistics and moving pieces for this meeting tonight. So I just want to clarify, and you'll see in the presentation later tonight, that the city council is required by state law to act on two options. We can either adopt it as an ordinance, the initiative, without amendment, or we can send it to the ballot without any amendments. Those are our options. We do not have any other, and it is required by state law to act. So I just want to provide that clarity, that the city council's hands are tied. So Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mayor. So next we have Will Calico.
Good evening, council members. My name is Will Calico. I'm the President for MultiCare Capital Medical Center. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak. I'll keep my comments brief. I represent a hospital, I work at a hospital. Hospitals are a very complex environment, and we provide a lot of vital services that rely on complex shifts. It's fair to say we're assessing the full impact of this initiative. I also think it's fair to say that there could be some unintended consequences from it as well. We're currently struggling with the impact of the state legislature, which just recently passed a number of sales tax and BNO tax increases. That's equivalent to about $1.7 million for MultiCare Capital Medical Center per year, so we're trying to figure out how we're going to pay for that. We're also, at the federal level, trying to brace ourself from what I dub the bill of questionable size and attractiveness and what that's going to bring for Medicaid services, decreases in Medicaid payment, and so on and so forth. So I just would ask the council to please put this on the November ballot, so thank you very much.
Thank you. April Miller, followed by Lizzie Karp.
Good evening, council members. My name is April Miller. I am a minimum-wage food service worker and an organizer with the Olympia Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America, and I'm here tonight, like many others, to tell you that we need a Workers' Bill of Rights. The cost-of-living crisis is wreaking havoc on communities across the country, and Olympia is no exception. The majority of Olympians are renters, and we aren't a startup city, right? Olympians are working in retail, or food service, or healthcare, logistics, and so many other industries. And then, of course, there's our thousands of proud civil servants, go Woofsee. This is a city full of working-class tenants, and at the end of the day, all of us can tell you that rent is too high and wages are too low. We gathered over 12,000 signatures on this initiative, an incredible feat in our small community. And to be fair, many of those signatures didn't make the cut, and the number-one reason for that was because they were outside the city limits. So many people throughout the South Sound work in Olympia, spend their time in Olympia, consider themselves part of Olympia, and they know that this is a fight that they have a stake in. We need elected leaders who are unafraid to stand up for working people and who are committed to building wider movements and organs of popular power beyond City Hall. And enacting the Workers' Bill of Rights would be a clear indication by council that the city of Olympia is willing to respond to collective action by our working-class community and advance an agenda of transformative change, and including small businesses is a part of that. There's a reason there's a tiered phase in in the Worker Bill of Rights, and also there's a reason why other Democratic Socialists candidates and elected officials across the country have supported measures like radically slashing small business fees. I know some folks have talked about vacant spaces tax or other forms of like land value tax to, you know, make sure that there's a check on big landlords and on commercial rents that squeeze small businesses. So this isn't a question of workers versus small businesses. This is about advancing an economic agenda in line with the Olympia Strong Development Plan that, you know, puts working people first but builds, you know, a wider agenda of transformative change that includes small businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Lizzie Karp, followed by Brian Gangter.
Hi, I'm Lizzie Karp. I'm president of Local 872 of Woofsee, and I'm encouraging you to adopt this as an For those of you who do have a predictable schedule, I would just like you to imagine what it's like to not be able to plan your life more than a few days out and like not know who's picking up your kids from school, you know, how are you going to pay $1,600 a month in rent on less than $17 an hour? I think it's pretty common sense, and I have a pretty good job, but I don't think it's because I deserve those things any more than a retail worker. In fact, you know, my funding might get cut because I work for the state and stuff's going on at the federal level, and like I could be one of these people too who doesn't have a predictable schedule, and I think a lot of us could be with just a few changes in our lives. So I think this is going to be good for everybody, and I hope that you support it. Thanks.
Brian Gangter, followed by Will Smith.
Hello. Yeah, I'm here speaking out in favor of this initiative. I think it's a lot of like really simple, not very radical stuff, raising the minimum wage along with inflation. People have mentioned that it doesn't break apart and categorize, but it does, so it breaks apart the raise of minimum wage based on the number of employees that the businesses has, so that small businesses are less affected than big businesses. This is mostly about like people working at like the McDonald's and the Costco, these companies that like have billions of dollars, giving out more money to their employees, not as much about like the mom-paw businesses downtown. And then like additionally, having, being able to plan out your life is just such a common sense kind of thing that we can do for people in the city. And then also like taking it to the voters, this is obviously something that is in overwhelming support by the community. Like this isn't really split, right? We have a bunch of volunteers versus a bunch of people who are lobbyists and business owners that are here like protecting themselves, and so the fact that it's split at all is like crazy overwhelming support from the community. And then just looking at the amount of signatures we had, they would all be here if they could. So putting out to vote is, to me, like a huge waste of time and money from the city, and then it's a waste of money from the businesses who are going to put a bunch of their coffers into trying to lobby against it over the next couple of months. We could save a lot of time and money by just passing it here. Thanks.
Thank you. Will Smith, followed by Alex Stamper, followed by David Portugal.
Good evening. I live in Olympia. Large corporations like McDonald's have some of the highest rates of employees who work full-time and also qualify for and receive public taxpayer-funded benefits like welfare food stamps. People work 40 hours a week and still make so little that they qualify for aid because it's not enough to survive on. I support these relief programs, but they shouldn't be needed by people who are employed full-time for a company that just refuses to pay them enough while at the same time posting record profits. The public, that would be everyone in this room and everyone who signed the initiative, is subsidizing these shareholders of these corporations as they exploit their workers and do the absolute bare legal minimum for them. I understand not all businesses in Olympia operate like that, which is why the Workers' Bill of Rights is so well-written. It forces the big corporations to weigh their rages first. This puts more money in the pockets of low-income households. These are the households that maybe didn't have any extra room in their paychecks, that have a date night at the nice, family-owned restaurant downtown, that couldn't afford to buy gifts for their friends at a boutique, they had to pay their rent and their bills first and had nothing left over. Trickle-down economics has never worked, but trickle-up sure does. When we put more money into the pockets of low-income households, the workers, the ones who make the operation of all these businesses even possible, then the whole community benefits. If everyone pays their workers just a little bit more, then all those workers will have that much more money to spend at the other businesses in town. These dollars circulate around our community and everyone wins, and that's just the financial side of it. This bill also provides for fair scheduling, as you've heard. Consider how hard it would be for you if your workplace didn't even give you a schedule until a day or two before you had to work. Let's end that unfair practice and pay our workers what they are worth. Please vote to pass the Workers' Bill of Rights immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Stamper?
Hi, I'm going to keep my comments brief. Because of the circumstances of my employment and because I'm in a strong union, I would personally not be affected by the Workers' Bill of Rights. However, I am a strong believer that a rising tide raises all ships, and because of that, I would encourage the council to enact the Workers' Bill of Rights into law because I don't want to live in a city where workers cannot afford to eat, cannot afford to shop, and most importantly, cannot afford to live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Portugal has ceded their time. Next we have Chad Kate, followed by Mindy Roberts.
Thank you for having me today. I am just a resident of Olympia, born and raised. I've went to North Thurston High School. Through my being at service to others and trying different works, I've tried a lot of different things over the board. My first job was at Papa Murphy's, and then moved into restaurants, retail, and have had quite a contrast of different ways to be at service. With that being said, all work is very important work. I don't believe that any work is more important than others. I understand where the bill is coming from and kind of leveling out everything. I think that the real importance would be to look at it and breaking it into three different segments. A lot of states have a tipped minimum wage, being anywhere from $7 an hour, with the main minimum wage being 12 or 13. I think by breaking it into tipped as well as non-tipped employees, and then having a third category for here in Olympia as a corporate employee minimum wage. I don't know what that would entail by definition, but probably the larger companies that we're all talking about, you know, Fred Meyer, Krogers, and those larger ways of being at service to Olympia and the community. I do think that it would hurt a lot of the restaurants, as well as a lot of the other businesses' traditions and wonderful staples to the downtown, as well as the outer outskirts of Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, the Thurston County kind of community. But I think adopting that first would be the most important, just because I don't think we've leveled that out yet, and I think it is something that should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mindy Roberts, followed by Isaac Wagnitz.
Hello, I am Mindy Roberts, and I am with the Olympia Union Gospel Mission. This morning, over 80 men and women woke up on the floor of the mission. Right afterwards, bright and early, 4:30, guess it wasn't probably bright, we turned everything into a dining facility, and we serve no less than 300 people a day, 300 meals, excuse me, a day. We love the people in our community. I am also on the board of the Olympia Downtown Alliance and really want this community to thrive. We're a nonprofit. We do our best to take care of our employees and to pay them well. Most of them are at 17 or even above that, and in order to compensate for the fact that it isn't a significant wage, we do provide meals, we have subsidized housing, and we try to do everything we can to make sure that they are cared for and loved and are a part of this family that is serving this community. I'm here because I want to be able to stay open. I'm here because we also have a kids' club, two of them on the west side. Children get off the bus, and they go to a safe place, and they're able Children get off the bus, and they go to a safe place, and they're able to learn math, and they're able to be with other adults and other children in community with one another. If this passes, we can't afford to pay our workers. We won't be able to keep the shelter open potentially, or we're going to have to stop serving those meals, or we're going to have to talk to the children that are being served and let them know that that kids' club isn't going to be able to be open in September. I am just asking that you take the time to discuss this and send it to a vote to allow us to have more information and to allow nonprofits to continue to serve the community and create a safe space that businesses can thrive and that people can be seen. Thank you.
Thank you. Isaac Wagnets, followed by Emily Claus.
Hi there. My name is Isaac Wagnets. I'm a 20-plus-year resident of Olympia. I'm proud to be a member of Woofsee Local 443 and a delegate to our local Central Labor Council. Lots really already been said about how the Workers' Bill will have a positive impact on working people in Olympia. I don't actually honestly have a lot to add to that, but I want to address how so much of council's hesitation around this seems to be around the impact on small businesses, which to my mind is just a little bit questionable in its own right. I mean, we haven't seen a mass die-off of small businesses in other localities where similar measures have been enacted in recent years. FDR said a great thing about how the best customer of American business is the well-paid worker, and I think that that's really true, especially with the kind of small businesses we're talking about here that rely a lot on people's ability to do discretionary spending. If the cost of living continues to rise, which it seems set to with tariffs and market fluctuations, but wages remain stagnant, people in our city will be spending less at local businesses. People will stick to paying the rent and buying essentials, and they'll tend to buy those essentials at bigger chains which can offer a lower price point. Now, I'll admit that my first concern is not the well-being of business. It's the well-being of workers. That's the side that I'm always going to be on. But having said that, I sincerely believe that failure to pass the Workers' Bill of Rights will, in the long term, only serve to give more of a competitive advantage to larger businesses without ties to our community. A number of small businesses have signed on in support of the Workers' Bill of Rights, and I don't think this is bleeding-heart altruism. They also are concerned with their bottom line. I think they just perhaps take a longer-term view of their self-interest. On the other hand, if working people in Olympia have more money in their pockets, they can plan their lives, they can go out and spend more money in the community, that'll mean more growth for business, that'll mean more revenue for government. That's going to be, and we have seen from that outpouring of support that people see the sense and necessity of it for our local economy. So I see no reason for further delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Claus, followed by Caleb Geiger.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Emily Claus. I am a Thurston County resident, and I'm also Thurston County Commissioner, but not speaking on behalf of my official role tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and these are my personal views. I'm speaking tonight in support of the Workers' Bill of Rights. Some of you know I grew up in my parents' coffee stand and car wash. I respect how hard small businesses work to make payroll and build community. Here's what I also know from my work at the county and my work as a service provider in Olympia. The people keeping those businesses running are the same people on our housing waitlists, showing up at food banks, piecing together childcare, and trying to stay in Olympia as rents continue to climb. When pay, hours, and scheduling are unstable, everything in a family's life becomes unstable: housing, health, school, and safety. That instability hits hardest for young workers, caregivers, queer and trans workers, immigrants, disabled folks, and people coming home from incarceration, exactly the neighbors we say we want to keep rooted here in our community. Tonight, as the mayor mentioned, you have two options: pass the Workers' Bill of Rights as it is or send it to the voters. I urge you to pass it. Setting a fair baseline helps good employers who are already doing right by their staff and prevents a race to the bottom that undercuts everyone. If you choose to refer it, please do so with a strong statement of support and commitment to enforcing these protections if the voters approve. We can honor small business grit and the dignity of workers who make Olympia run. Please move us forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Caleb Geiger, followed by Sid Locke.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Caleb Geiger. I'm an Olympia resident, a union member, an attorney, and a state worker. I'm here today to stand with workers in our community, the people who struggle every day just to make ends meet. One of the things that makes Olympia such a wonderful place is its small businesses. The creativity, the passion, and the spirit that these small businesses bring make Olympia the cultural heart of our region. But the real-life blood of these businesses are the people that keep them running, the workers. Without them, businesses are just ideas, empty storefronts, visions without life. These workers are what make Olympia what it is, and they deserve a wage that allows them to live with dignity. Now, I've spent my entire career in state government. I've helped write laws, and I know there's no just thing as a perfect law. But this initiative is not rigid. It grants the city council express authority to implement and enforce provisions, including the power to pass regulations. That gives you the council tools to refine the policies, to address concerns, close perceived gaps, and make sure that this legislation serves the people of Olympia. By passing this initiative today, the city maximizes the time that it has to collaborate with the community and draft those regulations to ensure that this policy is fair, clear, and effective. It also saves the taxpayers the roughly $66,000 that's estimated that this election will cost. But perhaps most importantly, it's an opportunity to show the community that when the working-class people in this community stand up to speak, the council not just listens, but acts. Thank you.
Thank you. Sid Locke, followed by Amelie Olinar.
Thank you, council, for the work you do. For the record, my name is Sid Locke. I live in Olympia. I'm a union member and a member of the Olympia Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. As you can probably guess, I strongly support the Workers' Bill of Rights, and I urge you to enact it immediately. I think it's a modest but very important step to help workers move toward a more dignified life. I understand that there are concerns, but we should remember that the cities of Sea-Tac and Seattle have had significantly higher minimum wages than the state minimum wage for 10 years, and the sky hasn't fallen. This year, they are both over $20 an hour. Burians and Taquillas' minimum wages are over $21 per hour for large employers. And similar to other Puget Sound cities, Olympia's small businesses will have a multi-year timeline before they have to pay the wages that very large businesses have to pay. MIT did a study and found that a single person with no kids needs almost $25 per hour to have a livable wage in Thurston County. Low-wage workers, they're essential. Low-wage workers are your constituents. They are friends and neighbors, and the economy doesn't move without them. I think everyone needs to ask themselves a larger question: is it right to have an economy where a sizable percentage of the workforce is subjected to wages where they don't earn enough to save for the future or support a child, where they can't plan any leisure activities because they don't know when they will be called into work? If people just shrug and think that's just the way things are, that we need a permanent underclass of precarious workers for the economy to function, then more and more people will and should demand a new and better system. Thank you.
Thank you. Amelie Olinar, followed by Gabriel Sazetti.
Hi there, council. My name is Amelie O'Connor. I went through this many times trying to write down notes, but I decided to speak from the heart. I'm a citizen here in Olympia. I've raised both of my boys here. I moved away for two years. I came back because I love it here. I'm a former teacher here in the community. I'm a single mother. I know how difficult it is to live on a single wage. It's difficult here. I'm coming to you to speak out, to ask that you do put this ballot on the initiative. I think it's important to examine the potentially unintended consequences that this initiative would create. I fully support all workers having a livable wage, but I think the putting, increasing the minimum wage here in Olympia will carry unintended consequences that would damage our community. I think we need to look at the root cause issues of a regressive tax structure, of unaffordable housing, and those issues need to be addressed at the legislature, not here at the municipal level. I would encourage you to think about the fact that this initiative really doesn't distinguish between small local businesses and large-box stores and those online retailers. It's, although differentiated by size, not enough so that it really captures the differences between businesses. My concern is that this will put our small local businesses that really distinguish Olympia and make it a community out of business and change forever the course of our city. So I thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you. Gabriel Sazetti, followed by David Webb, followed by Richard Burgess.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you today. I am urging you to support the Workers' Bill of Rights because I see struggling workers all around me. I hear how people are struggling to afford the cost of living in Olympia when talking to community members. I certainly respect the perspective of business owners and those in the business community. I hope you will consider that there are many people who need this legislation who cannot be here today because they are working multiple jobs to provide for their families. The majority of Americans live paycheck-to-paycheck and rent apartments. A prolonged disruption to their income means being on the streets. There are many broader societal issues that need to be addressed, some of those issues the previous speaker mentioned, which I very much agree with. This policy is a good starting point, but clearly more work needs to be done. Our current economic situation is squeezing us all, and I am sympathetic to everyone's struggles, but I do not think it is productive for us to measure our hardships against each other. Instead, I think we need to recognize our collective need for a better, more just reality. By standing with workers today, you make good on your promises to make the city more affordable for the people who keep it running. I am confident that this initiative will pass if it is sent to the voters in November. I thank you for your service and for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you. David Webb.
David Webb, Olympia. I was previously a small-business owner for over 10 years. I started a computer repair shop and at one point had seven employees. After running it myself for 12 years, I sold it to my, sold it to them. So I'm new here, and I like it so far. The co-ops and local businesses are the life of this city. Retail is not the lifeline of your economy. The workers are. The unions and workers of this beautiful city have been begging for your dignity, have been trying to get this through for a decade, and it's time you let them. Where I come from, the Chamber of Commerce also spoke against the needs of the people, advocating instead for the rights of businesses to exploit them. Commerce runs on the workers, not the owners. So-called "good employers," such as we've heard from earlier tonight, shouldn't have to change anything, but if they're not already upholding the Workers' Bill of Rights, then they should have already been doing things differently, and it's a reflection of their values, not the needs of the workers. If the survival of our local businesses is dependent on their workers not having enforceable rights, then maybe those local businesses shouldn't survive and could be replaced by ones that respect and appreciate their workers, their workers' rights. Retail isn't, oh, sorry. And then, they deserve rights. It's not complex. This is pretty simple. The unintended consequences that you've been repeatedly fear-mongered about are the consequences of a lack of rights, the problematic way things are that this seeks to fix. So don't let the state do it in a few months. Protect your people who make the city great and pass the law into, pass this into law tonight. Because if their proven track record of success is dependent on a lack of employee rights, then maybe things should be done differently going forward. So for the businesses who may have to make changes, protect them separately. Let's protect our small businesses by giving them rent control and tax subsidies, support them over the large companies. Address the expenses of the small-business owner so they're not pretending that more information will somehow justify not giving workers the rights they deserve. Another study isn't going to get them to listen to people over profits. Shame on anyone advocating or voting against workers' rights.
Richard Burgess, followed by Ozzy Bustamante. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, my name's Richard Burgess. I've been here since 2007. This is my 15th time at addressing the Olympia City Council. I've got horrific, horrible, horrible air at my apartment, P201 Burn Street Place Apartments. I believe it's intentional. I used to live in northern Virginia, 15027 Braddock Road, central of Virginia. Military guys were doing really weird stuff. They poisoned the area. They don't want me around. There's imperfections at my apartment. I know the water's not safe to drink. They don't want me around. There's a bunch of federal employees there. They don't want me around. It's very, very obvious. I'm at Saxon, my email is SaxonJade333@gmail.com. My phone number is 1-360-485-3632. I need to relocate. I need to get better air at my apartment. It's horrible. I think the guy upstairs is poisoning me with this horrible, horrible, like, chemical fuel stuff. And I was here a couple of months ago, and I told you directly that diesel fuel, diesel fuel is invading my apartment for over 15 months, super strong. I haven't got any good air. The air hasn't been great since I've been here. It hadn't been great for the past 25 years. But somebody's been deliberately, intentionally poisoned the living, bleep out of me at my apartment, and I'm on the housing voucher program. I'd like to relocate to, say, the Patterson Street Apartments or something like that. Housing has not been cooperative at all. They've definitely tried to get me off the housing voucher. The tentacles of people that don't want me around is for real, for real. And I'm a law-abiding citizen. I'm a good guy. I just need to get to, either the air clears up there, which I think it can, or get to a better place. I'm on the housing voucher program. So hopefully, somebody will be in touch with me, you know? So thanks. You wish me well, right? Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. So for anyone that may be newer to public comment, if you are hoping for a response from council, you might very well hear that, but we roll through the entire list of public commenters first. So if you think it's strange that you're not hearing any response, that is why. All right, so next we have Ozzy Bustamante, followed by Juniper Campbell.
I'm shorter than everyone else who's spoken so far. Okay. Hi, my name is Ozzy Bustamante. I am the secretary for Woofsee Local 1466. I think last time I was here, I was speaking on housing and affordability of housing, so funnily enough, they're related issues. You also have to make enough money to live, it turns out, especially in Olympia. Obviously, I can't speak more eloquently than some of my comrades have already on the bill, but it's a common-sense support of workers who make up our base. Obviously, the city cannot go on if people cannot afford to live and shop here, and even with the employees I work with and supervise now who make $17.97 an hour, which is about a dollar and some change more than the local minimum wage, they also cannot afford to live in Olympia. And so I think this is something that's very basic and does not need a lot of intense thought or debate to know that it's right to pass. So thank you very much for your time. Goodbye.
Thank you. Juniper Campbell, followed by Morgan Nichols.
Hello. Yeah, my name is Juniper, and good evening, city council members. Yeah, I'm in here in enthusiastic support of the Worker's Bill of Rights, and I am a student and an employee of Evergreen State College. I, you know, I mean, I know many students who still, even with the very generous financial aid that Washington State provides, still struggle to cover their living expenses, still struggle to find the time to work enough to be able to cover, you know, all the things that they need to do to continue to be students. And I, you know, my girlfriend dropped out for that reason, you know? And I think that it's very important if we want to continue to produce, you know, the educated populace that is needed to develop Washington State, that, you know, and many of the students work in Olympia. I'm aware that the Evergreen State College actually, I think, falls outside of the municipal jurisdiction, but the majority of the students who I know who are working class there and work outside, work in Olympia. And so this would affect the capacity for students at Evergreen to be able to continue going to college and getting an education. Additionally, I think it's really, really important thinking about the political impact in the long term of the capacity for the working-class base of this city to come together and to be able to make meaningful change, the political, you know, capacities for engagement that that encourages in people, encourages people to engage with the political process, to feel heard by the political process, and it creates a fantastic base to continue working forward on policies that can support the working class and also the small-business community. So that's what I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have Morgan Nichols, followed by Alice Rosewater.
Hello, my name is Borden. I'll keep this short, because other people have already spoken on in-depth things that I would cover. But I currently don't live in Olympia, but I've lived in the Thurston County area all my life, and Olympia has been a huge part of my life. And it really hurts to see and hear about all of the workers who can't afford, or who are struggling to pay rent, who are struggling to buy groceries, who can't like have a social life or a life outside of work because of difficulties with scheduling, and I hope that... And I hope that, and those workers are why this community exists, the reason why these small businesses can work and can offer their services and goods to the community. And I hope that the council will move to support these workers and support these people who make our community what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Rosewater, followed by Bruce Beagle.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Alice Rosewater. I'm a library worker. I'm on the executive board for the Thurston Lewis Mason Central Labor Council, and I'm a member of the Democratic Socialists of America. But tonight, I'm only speaking for myself to urge this body to take action and pass the Workers' Bill of Rights into law. Ballot initiatives are rare in the city of Olympia, but not because our residents don't care about politics. On the contrary, our residents are some of the most politically active in the entire state. No, it's because the number of signatures needed in order to put an initiative on the ballot in this city is unreasonably high, way higher per capita than what's required in other cities in our state. Over 5,700 signatures, after ballot verification, had to be collected, representing nearly 10% of the entire population. But in spite of this massive hurdle, Olympians have made their voices clear. We demand a higher minimum wage. We demand basic workplace protections in our city. So will you do it? Will you listen to the voices of thousands of working people in the city that you represent and pass the Workers' Bill of Rights into law? Or will you once again hesitate and delay on this matter, making workers wait even longer for basic dignity? You might say, "Put it on the ballot. Let the people decide. That's democracy." But is it democratic to give the business lobby another opportunity to pour thousands of dollars into our elections to buy public opinion? Hell, no. But if it comes to that, if the council abdicates its responsibility, we'll do it. We'll pass the Workers' Bill of Rights on the ballot in November, and we'll remember the city councilors who voted against our rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Beagle, followed by Jeff Hershey.
Hello, councilors. My name is Bruce Beagle. I'm a member of the Democratic Socialists of America. But my name nor my organization matters for what I am. I am here to speak for the people of Olympia. I am here to speak for working-class people that live in this city and call it home. I want to remind not only every seat, every single one of you, but also to every person in this room that I feel, as the mayor addressed, that there has been a very tenacious view over the Worker's Bill of Rights and that we have spent a very large amount of time talking over each other instead of talking to people. And that is what the Democratic Socialists of America have spent the last couple of months in collecting signatures for the Worker's Bill of Rights, along with other organizations have been doing, talking to people and hearing their issues out. We need to remember that this is a basic set of rights and a very extremely simplistic set of procedures and functions going forward that will not only increase the costs, sorry, that will not only increase the speech and the workforce in Olympia, but not only, I believe that bringing this issue forward is very simple and very easy. A lot of other cities in the United States have gone forward with initiatives like this. Mayor Zoran, or I should, sorry, say, future mayor, Zoran Momdoni, has credited Olympia once, and I don't want him crediting it twice because I want to be sure that we are on the forefront, that every one of you is on the forefront. I put my hope in every single one of you that going forward, that you will consider passing this Worker's Bill of Rights today to not only save the Democratic Socialists of America time, but also your local businesses' money in positioning against for this. This fighting does not have to continue. It can stop today. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Hershey, followed by Kent Reister.
Yeah, Jeff Hurst. Yeah, I came from Lewis County, a pretty poor area. I know what it's like to struggle from day to day. I now have a pretty good job. It's, and it's something that I would want other people to have as well. And we've probably heard people, I'm pretty sure a decent amount of us have heard, like, comments about, like, homelessness problem in Olympia around the small businesses and that not being desirable. And if you want to add more of that, keep going with the way things are. I guess that's it.
Thank you. And our final in-person public commenter, we have Kent Reister.
Hello, I'm Kent Reister. I'm a paraeducator at Olympia High School, and I'm here to speak in favor of the Workers' Bill of Rights. I wanted to share an example of a friend who was really struggling with scheduling. He was expected after a full shift back at work with less than four hours. And that's not enough time for him to sleep. There wasn't enough time for him to go get food and to take care of himself. And that's something that is perfectly acceptable with the way that the laws are, at least the way they were when he was going through that. And the Workers' Bill of Rights would help prevent that kind of thing from happening. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to virtual public comment. I was informed that for any of you that are repeat virtual public commenters, it looks a little different tonight. So we will see this, this setup right here where it won't be the person's full video if they do decide to come on video, but they are able to see the timer. And the timer will still make a sort of a ding sound at 30 seconds, just so you can wrap up your comments. And Susan, is the first person traveling over? It's Norma Servantis.
They are now traveling.
Thank you.
They have declined to be a panelist.
Okay, so we'll move on to Larry Jezza.
Larry is traveling.
Thank you.
Unmuted. Okay, here we go. Thank you. I want to talk about the comprehensive plan changes. The new plan has much to recommend it. It embraces climate resilience, equity, and social infrastructure that integrates human-scale design with a need to increase neighborhood sociability. But I take issue with the process, which has not respected the public's role, and public trust has suffered as a result. Late-breaking major modifications were made to comply with the wishes of the Land Use Committee. In the rush, documents and notices were not available in a timely manner, making an informed community dialogue about these major changes impossible. And it was clear that planning staff were being asked to redesign the plane mid-flight. In the rush, key concepts and criteria go undefined to be determined at some future date. For example, can neighborhoods trust that when neighborhood commercial enterprises are allowed everywhere, you will enforce the rules? Not when failing to enforce the current rules has allowed lobby firms to take over family housing in the capital neighborhood. Does it change the identity of the neighborhood? Let's put it this way. Austin Jenkins, in a video report, renamed it Lobbywood. There is placemaking in practice. The failure puts at risk what could be sensible approaches with community buy-in for desired neighborhood businesses, a win-win. But last night, even the former chair and current member of the Planning Commission recognized that the city of Olympia does not have great code enforcement. Quote, "The city of Olympia's code enforcement is kind of, kind of awful in terms of follow-through and time to abate," unquote. Not taking the time to do this right needlessly erodes community trust. A solution is to remove the newly introduced Commercial Business Everywhere provision and the new urban residential designation and provide the time for the community to understand, process, and buy in. The proposed plan has many good ideas, but the process must be just as deliberate, inclusive, and responsive as the good ideas it seeks to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next, we have Courtney Nevett.
Courtney is traveling.
My name is Courtney Nevett. My neighborhood, the South Capitol, is a neighborhood that the city council and city planners state they are trying to create with proposed changes. In our block, there are two apartment buildings, at least three duplexes. We have renters and owner neighbors with varying financial resources. You can easily find coffee, groceries, restaurants by walking a couple of minutes. Depressingly, the city has chosen not to support this, quote, "ideal neighborhood," unquote, which already exists. Homes once occupied by families have been turned into businesses in spite of this being a code violation. A survey revealed that most of them don't have business licenses, another code violation. A 2018 Seattle Times article estimated that a sampling of these businesses was bringing in almost $10 million annually. Why does the city allow this? We have been told that the city does not have the resources to enforce the codes and are intimidated by the attorney power and financial situation these businesses have. Now, unbelievably, zoning changes are being proposed to eliminate barriers to the conversion of homes to businesses. The city can't enforce the code, so the solution is to make turning housing into businesses legal. How is turning homes into businesses helping housing? How is this improving our downtown? Ironically, the stated goals of these zoning changes to create neighborhoods, like the South Capitol. Instead, it will undermine them. The South Capitol is a case study of the unintended consequences of allowing business home conversion, but it is not unique. Similar neighborhood destruction has been reported with Airbnbs and other home office, home business conversions. Businesses have different priorities and resources than individual residents. Businesses are not people. Businesses are not families or neighbors. The city has shown that they cannot protect neighborhoods from businesses which have more financial and legal resources. Solution seems to be to change the codes to make conversions legal. The city needs to back up and really look at what residents want rather than moneyed interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gordon White.
Gordon is traveling.
Hi. Hi, this is Gordon White, and I live in the South Capitol neighborhood as well. I'm going to comment on the changes to maximum, increasing the maximum density, doubling the maximum density, as well as the small-scale commercial issue. I'm very concerned about these changes, and you have tools to use to help us understand what the potential impacts, but you're not using those tools. You've prepared an EIS with the EIS, although required by state law. Do full build-out assessment has not been done, neither on these two policies or other important policies in the EIS itself. So I want to caution, don't move so too quickly, especially on these two policies, as you've already heard tonight from some of us, and do a fuller-scale environmental review of these things. It's not too far-fetched to see that new home-based businesses in our neighborhood, these vacant corporately-owned homes, the ones that are closest to the legislature, some of them are owned by people who represent Starbucks. Well, can't you see that they're opening up a small-scale Starbucks to offer for legislators in an empty building? We already have empty homes that are now being outfitted with cupables. Something needs to be done about that. And it's not just a code issue. It's a policy issue. Because if you're opening things up to small-scale commercial, what other kind of awkward things will happen with small-scale commercial, especially if they're owned by people who really don't live in the community? I'll close there. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Tammy Hetrick in the queue?
Yes, she is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, my video was shut off, and I couldn't get it to start. Thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding council action on the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative ordinance. My name is Tammy Hetrick. I'm the president and CEO for the Washington Food Industry Association. We represent the independent grocers, the convenience stores, and their suppliers. We're here today asking that you please move this proposal to the ballot for further consideration. We're concerned that there will be unintended consequences on the cost of food. For grocers and convenience stores that average a 1% profit margin, they would not have a choice but to increase food costs to comply with this mandate. Our members proudly provide good jobs and have many longtime employees. Many of these employers are second- and third-generation owned in the city. We are experiencing increased food costs due to trade and state tax increases that will continue to go into effect through January 2026 and will have a grave impact on cost of food in our state. A significant number of Olympia citizens are currently experiencing food insecurity. We ask that more time is taken to consider the full impact this mandate would have on those residents. And for franchisees that are included in this, it's devastating to their independent store owners. They do not receive assistance with employee issues, and they have a similar 1% to 2% profit margin. There was a reference to Seattle. Just six days ago, the news did a story about food deserts in Seattle and the concerns there that there won't be grocery stores left in the areas that they're needed most. So please consider moving this to the ballot so we can really be thoughtful on the process. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our final virtual commenter is Alex Ketter.
Alex is traveling.
Thank you, Susan.
Hello. Alex, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you to the council for hearing from the public on this matter. As a small business owner living and working in the city of Olympia, I'm here to express my opposition to the Workers' Bill of Rights. My wife and I own a franchise of an in-home care company, and we provide necessary care to keep seniors in our community safe at home. If my understanding of this bill is correct, because our business is a franchise, we would be considered a large employer, even though we only employ 40 people. We've poured our heart and soul into this company for the last seven years and are proud of how we've built this business up with a strong focus on our clients and our employees alike. I think we are one of these unintended consequences mentioned so many times tonight, a small business that would face significant hardship under this bill. Because our employees are skilled, certified caregivers with ongoing continuing education requirements, and because of the emotional and physical difficulty of this work, we pay well above minimum wage. But increasing the minimum wage will force us to increase wages in step with minimum wage. Because of the labor-intensive nature of our company, an increase of $3.34 an hour will cost my business over $200,000 annually. Those costs would be in addition to the so-called unfair scheduling payments. As other commenters in the medical space have discussed tonight, healthcare emergencies don't provide four days' notice. This bill is a death sentence to small businesses like mine. The only way that we would be able to survive and serve seniors in Olympia would be to significantly increase cost of care to our clients, who are often on a fixed income and unable to afford the increases. I respectfully request the council to not enact this bill and rather place it on the ballot so that hopefully logic will prevail and the public will consider the bill before we put our small businesses out of business and detrimentally impact the needed health services in Olympia.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Just a word before I return it over to the mayor to collect council responses is for anyone, and the majority of you, that have been here in person or just commented virtually on the Workers' Bill of Rights, please note that you will not hear council responses at this moment. We have it under Other Business. It's our only business tonight. But we have it under there. We'll listen to a presentation. We'll have time for any questions or comments. We'll then begin to take a vote and have some time for discussion. So that's when you'll hear from the council. With that, I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So aside from that, are there any additional comments from the council in response to public comment? Mayor Protem, when?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Courtney Nevett. And I think also Larry Jezza was talking about this as well. But talking about homes in the South Capitol neighborhood possibly being turned into businesses, or at least just not for residents. And so that is something that we've began to hear more and more at our council meetings. And myself and many colleagues are really interested in looking into this. So just so you know, this has come up, and it's a concern of ours as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any additional comments? Okay. So we do have to adopt the consent calendar, but before we do, order any requests for comments or questions on the consent calendar. or questions on the consent calendar. Okay. Seeing none, I need a motion.
Move approval of the consent calendar. Second.
All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is adopted. So before we move on to other business, I did receive a request for a brief recess from a council member, so at this time, we are going to recess for five minutes. Okay, if I could get council members to return to the dais, council members? So we are back. We are going to continue with our business this evening with item 6A on your agenda, which is the approval of a resolution regarding a council action on the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative ordinance concerning labor standards for certain employees. And presenting tonight is our Assistant City Manager, Stacy Ray. Stacy?
All right. Thank you, mayor, members of the council. For the record, I'm Stacy Ray, Assistant City Manager. All right. So the purpose of tonight's agenda item is for you to consider and take formal action on a resolution regarding a Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative ordinance. My role tonight is to share information with you about the initiative process and the language in the initiative as submitted by the initiative sponsors. My role is also to present to you the two options available to you to take action on tonight. What I won't be able to do is answer legal questions, interpret the initiative language, or provide comment or staff perspective on implementation. You will also see that your staff report does not include a staff analysis or a staff recommendation, and that's intentional. Tonight's agenda item follows a study session you held on July 17th during which you asked questions about the initiative language. Because I'm not able to provide responses to those questions within my role, what I will do is reflect back to you the questions we collected during that study session. Our agenda for tonight will include an overview of the initiative process and timeline, a review of what's in the initiative, and a review of the options before you for council action. So to review the petition's submittal and review timeline, on June 24th, our city clerk received the first batch of petition signatures. On June 25th, the first batch of signatures is filed, we filed it with the Office of Thurston County Auditor Elections Office. June 30th, we received the second batch of signatures and filed that with the Office of Thurston County Auditor. On July 14th, the Thurston County Auditor certified the petition as sufficient pursuant to RCW 35A 11.100. For the petition to be certified as sufficient, it must be signed by 15% of the total number of names of persons listed as registered voters within the city on the day of the last preceding city general election. The Thurston County Auditor's Office determined the number of minimum verified signatures required to be 5,788. Some data around the petition. The number of registered voters in the city of Olympia at the 2024 general election is 38,591. The number of signatures on the petition filed by the proponents is 13,764. The number of signatures examined was 12,118, and the number of minimum verified signatures required, as I noted before, is 5,788. The number of verified signatures by the county was 5,796, and the number of rejected signatures at that point was 6,322. So the timeline, moving forward, like as I noted earlier in my presentation, on July 17th, you held a city council study session for the purpose of understanding the process and also learning more about the language that's in the initiative. Tonight, you, in front of you, are your options for taking formal action on a resolution. That action must occur within 20 days after the certificate of sufficiency is received by the city, according to RCW 35.17.260. Again, the options for tonight are pass the proposed initiative petition ordinance without alteration, or send the proposed initiative petition ordinance without alteration to a vote of the people. Shown here is the timeline if you, as a council, approve a resolution to send the initiative to a vote of the people. On August 4th, you, as a city council, will take action on four against statement committee members. August 5th is the deadline established by the county for submittal of the resolution, explanatory statement, and four against committee members' names and contact information. August 12th is the deadline the county elections office has provided for us for the four against statements to be submitted to their office. So this presentation reflects the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative language as certified as sufficient by the Thurston County Auditor on July 14th, 2025. The petition title as submitted was Fair Wages, Fair Schedules: A Workers' Bill of Rights. A few things I want to note in advance of the presentation. The entirety of the initiative language is not included in this presentation. The content has not been summarized, which means that I've not summarized it into my own words, but instead is shown here precisely as written and as filed by the initiative sponsors. The content may be presented here in a different order than as in the initiative. Content that applies to all sizes of employers you'll see is duplicated within the presentation because I have reordered content to walk through it in terms of what's required based for small employers, medium, and large employers. Where the language is specific to a small, medium, or large employer, the employer size is shown in the following slides in bold, but that's my doing for this purposes of this presentation only. So the introductory language to the initiative states that in passing the Workers' Bill of Rights, the voters express the following intent. Workers deserve fair and secure scheduling with sufficient advance notice of their work schedules so they can plan their lives and family budgets. Workers deserve a fair opportunity to move into full-time work when those hours become available, and those additional hours should be distributed in a reasonable, transparent, and non-discriminatory manner. Workers deserve a fair wage for their work. The initiative raises the minimum wage so that Olympia workers get paid fairly, like employees in other major Puget Sound cities, and allows the minimum wage to increase for the cost of living, or excuse me, increase with the cost of living. Workers deserve a safe workplace environment. The Workers' Bill of Rights protects workers through basic safety planning and precautions. Workers deserve to know their rights and have tools to enforce them. So I'll start here with some definitions, and I'm starting with definitions that apply to large employer, medium employer, and small employer. So as I mentioned before, we've broken out the content, the following content of the initiative into these three categories, and you will see duplicated language. So definition for a large employer means an employer that employs more than 500 employees, regardless of where those employees are employed, including all franchisees associated with the franchisor or network franchises with franchisees that employ more than 500 employees in aggregate. A medium employer means an employer that employs more than 15 employees but not more than 500 employees. And a small employer means an employer that employs 15 or fewer employees regardless of where those employees are employed. As I mentioned before, I will note some of the questions that you had raised at the study session, just in order to reflect those back to you, even though as staff we were unable to respond to or provide answers to those questions at this time. The questions that we heard from you in the study session included, how many businesses in Olympia are in the large, medium, and small categories? Does this initiative apply to state and tribal governments? Why is there such a large gap between medium and large employers? Does it apply to Tacoma businesses doing work inside the city of Olympia? Continuing with definitions, the annual rate of inflation means 100% of the annual average growth rate of the bi-monthly Seattle-Tacoma-Bellevue area consumer price index. Hour worked within the city is to be interpreted according to its ordinary meaning, including all hours worked within the geographic boundaries of the city. So next, I'll move to the initiative content that would apply to a small employer. Under the section titled Giving Workers the Right to Fair Scheduling So They Can Plan Their Lives and Family Budgets. At the time of hire or during employment, employee may identify any limitations or changes in work schedule availability. The employee has the right to request not to be scheduled for work shifts during certain times or at certain locations, and the right to identify preferences for hours or locations of work. Under the heading Part-Time Employees Shall Have Fair Access to Additional Hours, the section shall not be construed to require any employer to offer an employee work hours if the employer would be required to compensate the employee at time and a half, an unfair scheduling payment, or other penalty under this chapter, or other premium rate under any law or collective bargaining agreement, nor to prohibit any employer from offering such work hours. This section takes effect 90 days after the effective date. Some questions that were raised by you at the study session includes, what's the definition of a, quote, "a shift?" And shift is not defined in the initiative language. Does advance notice regarding scheduling apply to all three categories? And if employee calls in sick and another employee volunteers to come in, do they get the extra payment? And does the initiative apply to salaried employees? Under the section titled Medium and Small Employers Shall Have a Multi-Year Phasing Period, and again, we're speaking to initiative content as it relates to small employers, starting upon the effective date and through the end of that calendar year, small employers, the bolding is mine, must pay their employees an hourly minimum wage rate as established in section 040 minus $3. The $3 reduction must decrease annually by 50 cents on January 1 of each thereafter until the reduction is zero. the reduction is zero. Under the section titled Coverage and Employer Classifications, employer classification for a calendar year will be calculated based upon the average number of employees during all weeks in the previous calendar year in which the employer had at least one employee. For the purposes of employer classification, separate entities will be considered a single employer if they form an integrated enterprise or are under joint control by one of those entities or a separate entity. The factors to consider in making this assessment include, but are not limited to, degree of interrelation between the operations of multiple entities, degree to which entities share common management, centralized control of labor relations, and for a degree of common ownership or financial control over the entities. Under the section entitled Retaliation Prohibited, no employer or any other person shall interfere with, restrain, or deny the exercise of or the attempt to exercise any right protected by this chapter. No employer or any other person shall take any adverse action against any person because the person has exercised in good faith the rights under this chapter. For the purposes of this section, an adverse action means any action taken by a person that would dissuade a reasonable person from exercising any right protected under this Under the section entitled Enforcement, the city is authorized to implement and enforce this chapter, including promulgating regulations. Any regulations the city promulgates shall have the force and effect of law and may be relied on to determine rights and responsibilities under this chapter. Any person or class of person that suffers financial injury as a result of a violation of this chapter is a subject of prohibited retaliation under this chapter, or any other individual or entity acting on their behalf may bring a civil action in a court of competent With regards to enforcement, some of the questions that you raised during the study session include, if the city is authorized to promulgate regulations, are they required to enforce the regulations? And are enforcement fines paid to the city? Continuing with enforcement, if the employer is found to have committed violations of this chapter, the city or court of competent jurisdiction on behalf of the city shall assess a fine in the amount set forth below. Continuing with enforcement, each employer must retain records as required by RCW 49.46.070, as well as such information as a city may require to confirm compliance with this chapter. Employers must permit authorized city representatives access to work sites and relevant records for the purpose of monitoring compliance with the chapter and investigating complaints Continuing with enforcement, complaints that any provision of this chapter have been violated may also be presented to the city attorney, who is hereby authorized to investigate and, if they deem appropriate, initiate legal or other action. The city has the authority to issue administrative citations, order injunctive relief. The city may, in the exercise of its authority and performance of its functions and services, agree to participate jointly or in cooperation with Washington State or any county, city, town, or other incorporated place or subdivision thereof, or engage outside counsel to enforce this chapter. Remedies and penalties provided under this chapter are cumulative, and the statute of limitations for any enforcement action shall be three years. Under the section entitled Miscellaneous, nothing in this chapter shall be construed to discourage or prohibit the employer from the adoption or retention of policies more generous. Nothing in this chapter shall be construed diminishing the obligation of the employer to comply with any contract, collective bargaining agreement, employment benefit plan, or other agreement providing more generous policies to an employee than required herein. And except as to the minimum wage, the requirements of this chapter shall not apply to any employees covered by a bona fide collective bargaining agreement. Lastly, for under the category Small Employer, the section entitled Other Legal Requirements, rulemaking, within 120 days after the effective date, the city must adopt rules and procedures to implement and ensure compliance with this chapter. And the effective date, if this ordinance is enacted during a November general election, it shall take effect on January 1 of the immediately following year. A question that was raised at the study session includes, what is in place between the effective date and the 120 days for rulemaking? Next we'll move to Medium Employer. For the sake of time, I am going to move through where the language is duplicative and focus where it specifically applies to a medium employer. This is the same language as shown under Small Employer. Under the section entitled Part-Time Employees Shall Have Fair Access to Additional Hours, before hiring additional employees or subcontractors, including hiring through the use of temporary services or staffing agencies, large and medium employers, again, the bold is my emphasis, must offer additional hours of work to existing employees, who in the employer's good faith and reasonable judgment have the skills and experience to perform the work, two, notify all such employees when additional hours are available, and three, use a reasonable, transparent, and non-discriminatory process to distribute the hours of work amongst those existing employees. This section shall not be construed to require any employer to offer an employee work hours if the employer would be required to compensate the employee at time and a half, an unfair scheduling payment, or other penalty under this chapter. This section takes effect 90 days after the effective date. Next section is entitled Medium and Small Employers Shall Have a Multi-Year Phase-In I neglected to include the bolding here, but I will read this as it's specific to medium employers. Starting upon the effective date and through the end of that calendar year, medium employers must pay their employees an hourly minimum wage rate as established in section 040 minus $2 per hour. The $2 reduction must decrease annually by $1 on January 1 of each year thereafter until the reduction is zero. This slide is a section covered within Coverage and Employer Classifications. This is the same as a small employer. This section is entitled Retaliation Prohibited, and is the same as the other sized employers. The section's again referring to enforcement, and is the same content as we covered with a small employer. Please let me know if you'd like me to stop or highlight anything in particular. And again, the enforcement section as it applies to medium employers is the same as we saw with the small employer. Again, and this enforcement language is the same as well. This enforcement language is the same as well. And under the section entitled Miscellaneous, this is also the same as the other sized And lastly, the initiative language under Other Legal Requirements is the same as the other sized employers. Next we'll move to a large employer. So as a reminder, a large employer is defined as an employer that employs more than 500 employees, regardless of where those employees are employed, including all franchisees associated with a franchisor or network franchises with franchisees that employ more than 500 employees in aggregate. The section entitled Giving Workers the Right to Fair Scheduling So They Can Plan Their Lives and Budgets is the same as the other small and medium employers. The section titled Giving Workers the Right to Fair Scheduling So They Can Plan Their Lives and Family Budgets, this section specifically applies to large employers. So large employers shall provide their employees with a written work schedule at least 14 calendar days before the first day of the work scheduling period. The employer shall post the written work schedule in a conspicuous and accessible location at the workplace in English and in the primary language or languages of the employee or employees at the workplace. Large employers shall notify the employee of any employer requested change to the work schedule as soon as possible. An employee of a large employer may decline a work shift for which they receive less than 14 days' advance notice. If the employee consents to work such a shift, the employee shall be entitled to an unfair scheduling payment equal to one hour of pay at the employee's regular rate of pay for each shift worked with less than 14 days' advance notice. Under the section entitled Giving Workers the Right to Fair Scheduling So They Can Plan Their Lives and Family Budgets, there's, the following language applies specifically to large employers. An employee of a large employer may decline a shift that begins less than 10 hours after the end of a previous work shift. If the employee consents to work such a shift, the employee shall be entitled to an unfair scheduling payment equal to one-half of the employee's regular rate of pay for each hour the employee works, which is less than 10 hours after the end of the previous shift. Under the section entitled Part-Time Employees Shall Have Fair Access to Additional Hours, large and medium employers are specifically referenced here. Before hiring additional employees or subcontractors, including hiring through the use of temporary services or staffing agencies, large and medium employers must do the following as noted here, we covered this under medium employers. Under the section entitled Large Employers Shall Pay Minimum Wages Comparable to Other Puget Sound Cities, this language applies directly to large employers. Upon the effective date, the minimum wage for every employee in the City of Olympia is increased from that set by the state minimum wage to the higher City of Olympia minimum wage established in this ordinance. Upon the effective date, every large employer must pay to each employee an hourly wage of at least $20 per hour. The minimum wage established under 04OB shall stay in effect until the end of the calendar year in which it becomes effective. On January 1 of the next calendar year, and each January 1 thereafter, the hourly minimum wage must increase by the annual rate of inflation to maintain employee purchasing The next section addresses Coverage and Employer Classifications. This is the same as for a small and medium employer. The next section heading is Protecting Workers Through Safety Planning and Precautions. Every, this specifically applied to large employers. Every large employer must create a workplace safety plan to protect workers and consumers in the event of violence or natural disaster pursuant to this section. Every large employer must consult with workers in developing the worker's safety plan or to update an existing plan. Large employers must protect workers in isolated or dangerous areas, providing them access to panic buttons installed in such areas or that are worn by the worker. Large employers must establish and document at least an annual training or drill of evacuation plan. Large employers must protect employees from injury by establishing and maintaining a safe staffing level for workplaces containing over 15,000 square feet of retail space. Some questions that were raised by council at the study session included, are safety standards included because they currently don't exist? What safety standards are currently in place at the state? Who determines if businesses are meeting these safety standards outlined in the initiative? Continuing under the heading Protecting Workers Through Safety Planning and Precautions, large employers covered by a collective bargaining agreement must seek input from the employees' union on the workplace safety plan, notify the union of training or drill schedules, and allow a union representative to participate. And if a large employer fails to meet the requirements of this section, it shall be a violation of this chapter, and the large employer must pay each of its employees a hazardous workplace premium in the amount set by rulemaking until the violation is Next section's entitled Retaliation Prohibited, this is the same language as applies to small and medium employers. And again, this section entitled Enforcement is the same language as applied to medium and, excuse me, small and medium employers. Again, this section under Enforcement is the same as it applies to small and medium This next section on Enforcement, again, is the same as applies to small and medium The section on Enforcement is also the same as applies to small and medium employers. And the miscellaneous, the section under Miscellaneous is the same as applies to medium and small And lastly, Other Legal Requirements is the same as applies to small and medium employers. So that concludes the review of the content of the initiative. As I mentioned before, tonight in front of you is your option to take action. According to RCW 35.17.260, provides that a proposed initiative ordinance signed by sufficient registered voters in the city shall either be passed by the legislative body without alteration within 20 days after the county auditor's certificate of sufficiency has been received, or shall cause an election to be held, as provided in RCW 29A 04.330 for submission of the proposed ordinance without alteration to a vote of the people. So in front of you tonight, you have two separate resolutions. Again, the decision in front of you is to take action on one of the two resolutions. The first, as we mentioned, the first resolution to enact the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative ordinance, and the second resolution in front of you is to send the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative to the ballot for a vote of the people. And that does conclude the presentation.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Okay, so any questions from council? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Stacy, thank you for reorganizing this. I think you took some complex legal language and made it a little more digestible by sorting it by size, so thank you for that. I was just curious, because I know I remember somewhere in the back of my head, but where can the public find presentation decks from council meetings? Like, will they become attached to the packet later, or would they have to request them?
No, we can attach it and make sure it's available on our city website, and we'll also ensure that we have information regarding this process that's easily accessible on our city website.
Okay, cool. So you can add this into this packet after the fact?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, thank you. And then, there was one other thing that you didn't mention that came up at the study session, and that's the council's ability to request paying for the additional signatures to be verified. And I just wondered if we could kind of add that into the Q and A before we get into the resolutions and see if there's any interest in moving forward. I honestly have a high interest in moving forward. You mentioned when I asked last week that it would be about $1,500 to validate the remaining 1,500 or so signatures, give or take, meaning that we've been paying about a dollar a signature already to validate more than, validate or not validate more than 13,000 signatures. And so I just wondered if the council would be open to the request to go ahead and finish that work?
Okay, I am seeing thumbs and hands, so I just want to make sure. Councilmember Green, you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I would just be curious, Councilmember Cooper, kind of the intent of that, I'll tell you, in my head, I looked at sort of the rate at which signatures are accepted or rejected, and kind of came up with an estimate of what or rejected and kinda came up with an estimate of what is probably, but is there a, uh, yeah, just what would be the goal there?
Thank you, Mayor Payne. So my goal would be just to see how many Olympia voters actually signed it in the end. Um, and while I can do the same estimation, and you're probably right, um, I think it's, given how much we've, how far we've gone into, into this, it just makes sense to finish it, but, I get it.
Um, Councilmember Cooper, I, I guess my question would be, what would be the purpose of that? What would be the purpose of wanting to know how many Olympia voters signed it?
Cause it feels right to me, I guess, yeah?
I suppose, um, but I, you know, there's, uh, there's, you know, in theory, you know, if we were to, uh, select the secondary option that we see here on our screen, if we were to do that, then we already have to pay for the cost of an election. So is that your point, or? I'm just trying to understand the, the reason.
I mean, I'd love to hear other people's opinion. My, my point is that it's, uh, budget dust in this conversation when we talk about election or not, like, to go ahead and finish and be able to definitively know how many Olympia voters, uh, were, were responsive to the request to sign the initiative.
Okay. I saw, I think I saw two additional thumbs up, um, in, in honoring that request. Councilmember Madron.
I just wanna note, one of, one of my concerns is, um, I'm not entirely sure on what is ultimately gained from it, but I know that the, the auditor's office is just slammed, um, you know, especially with primaries around the corner, um, so I don't know that this information would even, even come to us in a timely way, um, but I would be, I would wanna know more about their capacity, like, it's, it might not be that much money for us, but it might be a good amount of staff time for them that they might not necessarily have to spare. So, um, without that information, I'm just, that, that's my concern.
Mayor Protam Nguyen.
Yeah, um, you know, I think that it's great that you asked, and that, you know, the reason is because it makes sense to you to, that it feels right to you. I do a lot of things cause it feels right to me, and people look at me like I'm silly. So, you know, you gotta like, ask for it. Um, I would not be in favor of it just because, or I don't feel like strongly moved to do so, because depending on how the vote goes tonight, if we did the first option, then it's like whoever, whoever Olympia voter signed onto it, they, they get that. So there you go. And then the second one would be then, uh, voters would, uh, vote either for or against, right? Um, in November, and then, and then we'd find out anyways who is for it. So I just, I just feel like that's enough for me, if that makes sense, but, um, but thanks for asking.
Yeah, that's where I was gonna go with it as well, is, is that I, I think eventually we will know what the outcome is. Are there any additional questions or comments from the dais? Specifically for our presenter, our Assistant City Manager, Stacy. Any additional comments? Councilmember Madron.
Um, I don't have any questions. I mean, you've obviously gotten a lot of questions from us in the last study session that there's just not time or capacity to answer. Um, and, uh, so, I appreciate that you've collected all of that, um, and, uh, I just wanna appreciate that this has been a significant amount of staff time, both, for both of our Assistant City Managers to kind of, uh, wrap our, help us wrap our heads around this decision before us, um, in a very short amount of time. Um, and I know there's probably, you probably would've been sitting around doing nothing if this didn't come up, but, uh, but I'm sure there were many other things that are pressing priorities of the city that had to kinda be put on the back burner, uh, to, to get through this, uh, compressed timeline for this. So I just wanna appreciate, uh, both of you for putting your time and energy into this to support us in figuring this out.
Are there additional questions or comments for Stacy? Mayor Protam Nguyen.
I just wanna do a shout out. We have, um, our deputy clerk in the back, too. It's a city staff member, so, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you I was gonna say this, but, um, but literally staff are working either way that the vote goes tonight. They need to rush up and find the mayor and get a signature and start moving on things. And so, there's just, uh, there's, there's a lot of work, um, to be responsive to this, um, including, uh, including making sure that, uh, council understands exactly what this is, because this is a somewhat unusual situation for us, um, cause we would've probably had a bunch of ideas at our study session of, oh, hey, let's dig in, let's mold it this way, let's, you know, but no alterations, so, anyways, thanks.
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, you're not hearing us ask very many questions tonight. Uh, I would encourage you, if you haven't, uh, watched it, to go back and review last week's meeting, uh, July 15th, uh, where we held a study session specifically on the initiative, and we asked, uh, all the questions during that meeting of, of, of what we, I'm sorry. It was the 17th, that's right, it was a special study session, so it was actually a Thursday, July 17th. Thank you, Councilmember Green. Thursday, July 17th meeting is where we asked the questions during a study session about this initiative. So, you're not hearing very much from us tonight, uh, in terms of questions. Okay, so, thank you very much, Stacy.
Thank you.
So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I'd like to make a motion, and if there's a second, I'd like to speak briefly to it. It would be my honor to move to resolve, whereas the Olympia City Council hereby finds and declares that the initiative petition's proposed ordinance concerning labor standards for certain employees is consistent with the city's values and promotes proper protections for work scheduling, a minimum wage in the city of Olympia, a safe workplace environment, and other labor regulations, and therefore, the Olympia City Council does hereby resolve as follows. Section 1, Adoption of Initiative Petition Ordinance Concerning Labor Standards for Certain Employees. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to move to approve a resolution enacting the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative Ordinance Concerning Labor Standards for Certain Employee, Employees as part of the Olympia Municipal Code. So, uh, floor is now open for discussion.
May I speak briefly to my motion?
Sure. Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you. So, this measure came to us with more than enough signatures to qualify for the ballot, and I, that was a strong signal from people in Olympia. I say that we pass the measure now and spend the time and resources that would be spent on an election campaign, instead, meeting with employers and workers, conducting the study to address our questions, and planning the best possible implementation of the pay and scheduling protections. One of the questions we've asked often is, who will this measure benefit? And in my world, working class is not a temporary phase, it's, it's a lifetime of work. Hourly workers in many different industries, workers in different phases of their life, all would benefit from increased pay and scheduling protection. Whether the paycheck comes from a boutique, or large, locally owned, or corporate employer, doesn't change the fact that that paycheck has to pay the workers' bills. The people who would benefit from the Workers' Bill of Rights span our community, from teenagers who have to contribute to the family budget, to many, many parents of school-aged children, and more and more, to elders who must continue to work to pay for their healthcare insurance and expenses. The measure's an important step to leveling the playing field in Olympia and creating a strong Olympia where everybody has a chance to belong and an opportunity to live with dignity. So please join me in adopting the Workers' Bill of Rights tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. Councilmember Cooper, followed by Mayor Protam Nguyen.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. We're at a pivotal moment, not just for this council, but for the working people of Olympia. The Workers' Bill of Rights submitted through a citizen petition and certified by the Thurston County Elections Office is now before us. We have a choice, adopt it ourselves, or send it to the November ballot. I'd urge us to adopt it now. This is not, this initiative is not a vague aspiration, it's a clear, community-driven mandate. Over 13,000 signatures were submitted, far exceeding the threshold required. That's not just a number, that's thousands of our neighbors, constituents, and local workers from around the region telling us they want action now. The Bill of Rights lays out essential protections, fair scheduling, access to full-time work, a living wage that keeps pace with the cost of living, and safer workplaces. These are not radical demands. These are the baseline expectations of a just and modern economy, and they mirror standards already adopted in places like Seattle, King County, and elsewhere. Now, I want to address a few myths, because I know they're circulating. Some say that by raising minimum wage, we will hurt young workers or nonprofits. But the data tells a different story. Studies consistently show that higher minimum wages do not reduce youth and, youth employment. In fact, they often lead to better job stability and more predictable hours, things young people need just as much as anyone else. And for nonprofits, fair wages help retain staff, reduce turnover, and improve service delivery. These organizations are already mission-driven, paying workers fairly, fairly strengthens, not weakens their ability to serve. Higher wages reduce turnover, they increase retention, they build stronger teams and more resilient organizations. That is not theory, it's proven practice. And here's the deeper irony. We talk about housing all the time in this chamber. We talk about affordability, zoning, density, supply, but we rarely talk about wages. We rarely talk about workers. Yet the two are inseparable, as we heard from people this evening. Olympia does not have a housing shortage, it has an economic mobility crisis. Forty-four percent of households in our city fall below, and I'll give the caveat, this is my day job to do the ALIS study, asset limited, income constrained, employed. Forty-four percent are struggling to get by every single day. These are people who work, often full-time, but can't still afford their basic necessities. Housing costs in Olympia have risen 55% over the past seven years, while wages have only risen 38. The gap is not just a statistic, it's a trap. It keeps people stuck in the cycle of rent burden, unable to save, unable to move, unable to build wealth. And when people can't move up, they can't move out, literally. Our housing shortage has worsened by the fact that people can't afford to leave rental units, can't afford to buy homes, and can't afford to stay in Olympia long-term. We cannot solve our housing crisis without addressing wages. We cannot build a thriving city on the backs of underpaid workers, and we cannot keep deferring decisions that we have the power and the responsibility to make. By adopting this measure ourselves, we demonstrate leadership. We show that we trust the people who elected us to make decisions, not just to punt them to the ballot. We avoid a costly divisive campaign season, and instead, focus our energy on implementation, education, and enforcement. Let's not miss this moment, let's not defer justice, let's adopt the Workers' Bill of Rights today and affirm that Olympia is a city that leads with courage, compassion, and conviction.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper. Mayor Protam Nguyen.
Oh, I have so much to say, and I have so many feelings I'm feeling right now. What an unfortunate, what a deeply unfortunate place to be in. I think for everyone, uh, I really appreciate hearing from everyone tonight, I really appreciate all the people that have called and emailed, set up meetings, um, you know, even the days when it was like, meeting, 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 meeting. Um, and, uh, folks care a lot, or, one of our Assistant City Managers, Debbie Sullivan, she says that, um, I think it's like, uh, it's that we're a community that cares, right? Cause we, we come sometimes like, intense on issues, and, um, and nights like tonight, it's a big decision. Um, and I don't think that's something that any of us take lightly, I know I don't, but the fact that folks are here tonight, and folks showed up in droves last year when this, this issue came up, um, we, this is actually a small group of people, if you could imagine that compared to last year. We couldn't even open or close these doors here, it was just flowing out into the lobby. Um, it was standing room only, uh, I saw, uh, just like I see tonight here, is I saw employees, or I guess, workers, um, and, um, employers, uh, that spoke up, and then I also saw folks that were falling into the background that wanted to stay, uh, apprised of what was going on, but also had some, I think, nervousness around speaking, um, around if they were gonna be judged, either way, right? If there was gonna be retaliation, if their employer was gonna be upset with them, if their employees or if the community would think that they don't support their staff, you know, I hear that a lot from, uh, small business, nonprofit, um, other types of employers. It's not, uh, this is, uh, just about employers, right? It's not only small businesses, it's, we haven't actually, um, really had much discussion tonight about other types of businesses, really. Um, so we sort of think about small business and big business, but just employers overall, so, that in itself, uh, it impacts a lot of people. And at the heart of it, uh, I really agree with a lot of things on the Workers' Bill of Rights. Um, yeah, of course, I wanna know what my schedule is, I wanna have a, you know, quote-unquote, fair wage or a living wage, all of these different things that, uh, I think, to some degree, I think that we all can agree on that, um, but as far as how to get there, not so much agreement there. And there is clearly an affordability issue, otherwise, we wouldn't be here talking about this. Um, and I think that it is unfortunate that this issue has come before us, uh, in this way where we can't, we can't change anything. Um, and then at the same time, I'm going along on this one, cause it's a big one tonight, so, thanks for the time, in advance. Um, but the, uh, but at the same time, like, I, I really admire, uh, the, the folks that are, the organizers with the Workers' Bill of Rights, um, uh, you know, and, and them going for it. I have a lot of questions, um, if anyone saw our council study session, uh, there were a lot of questions from council colleagues, uh, there were a lot of questions last year. I've been given some answers, but I still have a lot of questions remaining. Um, I think it's unfortunate that, uh, from some, not everyone, uh, but some, I'm hearing this sort of like, are you for, are you for labor or workers, or, you know, do you support small business? And, um, as I've been paying attention for each one of us that said why we wanted to run for office, um, or when I've talked to my colleagues, I don't know anyone on this dais that says that, you know, they don't care about both, truly, um, even though you might see, you know, different votes tonight. Um, and I certainly care about both, and it's, it's a tough one. I think that also, this Workers' Bill of Rights has been brought here tonight, um, to the Olympia City Council specifically, uh, because there, uh, you know, may be a chance that we would pass it in Olympia. So any notion that Olympia doesn't do bold, different, challenging things, or challenges status quo, uh, I don't agree with that. I think we've done a lot of things. Um, there's been, uh, things that I was absolutely known, and I talked to a lot of people, and I, you know, um, realized that, uh, you know, there was, uh, there was some merits to it, and, and, and voted yes for it anyways. I think we do a lot of bold things as an Olympia City Council, and I think that's one of the reasons that you all are here tonight, um, before us for this. Uh, there was also, for anyone that might not be tracking this, there was, this came up last year, and we've decided at our January council retreat to put this on our work plan, where we would use city resources to, uh, do a, uh, an in-depth, uh, analysis of what the current state is, and then also engage community members, um, all across the board, not just one group of community members, uh, is the goal, and that is something that I wholeheartedly supported, that's something that this council supported to put on our work plan, and that's big in a year of a budget shortfall and having to make, um, having to make cuts. Uh, if this were to pass tonight, we would have to pause that. Um, if it were to, uh, get, even, uh, if it were to go to the November ballot, we would have to pause the work on that, and in that time, we could've been, um, doing a process the way that I would've wanted it, and bringing people together and, and figuring out, um, what does it look like to make impact in our community? For me, there is simply too many questions for this, some, too many unanswered questions, and I cannot feel responsible about, of voting to pass it tonight. Um, I don't think that would be good policy. I don't think that would be good policy-making. I am committed to, if there's opportunity still, to find the way forward, but I'm not convinced that this is it. There's, you know, there's a lot of basic questions that we asked, that City Council asked at the study session that we just had, and that, to me, is like, we should not be having those very basic questions. So I couldn't in good conscious passes tonight and look any community member in the face and tell them, you know, why, and really go in-depth behind it. There's, anyways, I'm going long, so sort of, seeing my time, I do want to hear from other council colleagues, but too many basic unanswered questions. So I will not be voting to pass this tonight, but instead be moving it to the November ballot. Thanks.
Councilmember Madron.
I think everybody in this room knows that this council really supports our community. As the Mayor Protem has said, we've done a lot of things to move the needle forward. And I'm really concerned about this devolving into who cares and who doesn't, but that's really just not the case. I know all these people super well, and I know that we all care, and I see that everyone in this room really cares about how people are doing in our community. I've heard a couple of commenters talk about how this is just a really simple decision to make. And as you could see by the, what, 20, 30-minute presentation we just had, it's not a simple set of policies in front of us. And when we talk about the signatures that were gathered, you know, I was asked to sign the petition a number of times, and it was a very quick, "do you support a higher minimum wage?" And not a 20- to 30-minute presentation on all of the content of this. And so, you know, when it comes to, you know, the number of signatures and the turnout from the community to get this on the ballot and to get this in front of the City Council, I don't think that the people who are signing that knew the full impacts of what it was they were signing. So, you know, I appreciate that that work was done in the community. I appreciate the perspective of council members who see that as an indication that we should go ahead and pass this tonight, but I disagree. One of my big challenges with this, yeah, I want to walk a little bit through the history of, you know, where, you know, at least from my perspective and the people that I have talked to from several years ago to today, you know, speaking of, you know, being a council that does act when we see the reason to do so, when we see a really strong need in front of us and a really clear policy to act on. During the pandemic, UFCW approached us and said, "grocery workers are really struggling. They're working in extremely hazardous conditions, while large corporation grocery stores are making profits hand over fist. And we don't think that's fair, and we would like you to act." And we passed hazard pay, and, you know, and that lasted until the end of the pandemic was declared by the governor. So we didn't hesitate on that, and we saw that there was a really dire need, and it was the scalpel approach. We could see how we could very clearly impact people who were supporting our community during an emergency. And so, you know, we have stepped up in the past on issues. And this time last year, it was July of last year, I had a conversation with somebody at UFCW, and, you know, they were talking about the struggles that grocery workers are still facing, and it's real. You know, they're not paid very well, they are in unsafe conditions because they are understaffed, you know, they're increasingly getting put into situations that feel dangerous to them. And I feel like those issues are substantial, and they're real. And then I was asked if I would support Workers' Bill of Rights for the City of Olympia, because it would strengthen their position at the bargaining table as they're working to get more rights for their workers. And, you know, we had a conversation about it at the time, this was last year, you know, and I expressed my concern about, you know, how might things impact small businesses? How might things impact nonprofits, where we have people who are helping us as a city fulfill some of our goals that we're unable to accomplish but are really important to the community? You know, and we talked about, you know, what it might look like to engage some more stakeholders in something that works for Olympia. And I'm going to gloss over a lot of the steps between then and now, but, you know, towards the end of last year, we had a big discussion around moving forward one part of the Workers' Bill of Rights, which was the minimum wage. The Mayor Protem talked about the standing room only here in City Hall. There was a big discussion about it, and at the end of the day, we decided, as the Mayor Protem described very eloquently, so I'll say it succinctly, that we needed more information. We needed to know what people's needs were, we needed to know the impacts to different types of businesses, to nonprofits, and how something like this would reverberate throughout the community. We also talked about, maybe there's something that's not in the Workers' Bill of Rights that hasn't yet been considered, that we need to also have on the table. So that's what we wanted to do, that's what we budgeted for this year. And instead, we're in this situation that was unsatisfactory to the proponents of this initiative, and now we're in a place where we have this, you know, proposal that I'm really concerned about. I'm concerned about the impacts that it's going to have. There are a lot of unknowns. There's probably going to be a lot of unintended consequences, and because it's going through the initiative process, we can't do anything to change it, except to put it on a future ballot, you know? And there's a lot of harm that can be done while we do the work to figure out how we might amend it, and then put that on the ballot, and then, you know, it's very complicated. I got an email from a constituent today who said, "Hey, workers are really struggling, like, you know, pass it tonight, and then, you know, the City Council can work to clarify it." I don't think people realize how locked in we are to this very specific language unless we come back to the voters at, not this November, but the following November, and request changes of the community. And in that time, any kind of study we do is going to be very colored by this experience, and I think that that's unfortunate. And so, you know, yeah, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. I think that was demonstrated in our study session. And if we, as, you know, elected leaders who have our finger on the pulse of many issues, can't sit down and look at it and say, "Hey, you know, we see how this makes sense, and we want to support it in this amount of time," then I think that voters deserve a lot more time to consider this. So I won't be supporting passing it this evening, and we'll see it, you know, I'd like us to put it forward on the ballot.
Thank you. Councilmember Vanderpoel.
I'm going to start by saying it's important to understand that we can disagree on policy. We can support housing and zoning reforms, for example, but disagree on one piece of legislation. But I will never stop respecting and valuing what each of us bring to the council, and what members of the public bring to our city, regardless if they agree or disagree with this. During the council retreat this last year, I believed at the time to do a study based on what we had as a city. But since then, I've spoken to folks in the community, union members, small businesses, and although not all businesses agree with this, I hear your concerns with the high cost of operating, the lack of volume, the number of people coming into your businesses, and so forth. The struggle is real for small businesses, but so is it for the working class. I believe that we must support small businesses and labor because we have to. To me, this means supporting both the supply side and the demand side of the economy, looking at reducing the cost for small businesses and supporting working folks, looking at the cost of housing and childcare and transportation, but also having a strong benefits in wages in the city. Is this a perfect bill? No, but it will provide the framework for positive changes during a cost of living crisis, a framework to bring rights usually preserved for unions to the general public. As we come into the fall, I ask, although we may disagree, and deep disagreements will exist in the community, that we be civil towards each other. The angels of our better nature come from civil discourse and debate and not anger. I say this because I support the Workers' Bill of Rights. I'm very open about that, and not everyone in my life does, and that's perfectly fine because we agree on other things. And I believe that as we go into the fall, as it appears so far from what I'm counting, that it will probably go to the Fall Ballot Initiative, although I will probably, I will be voting here in a minute. I just want everyone to know that despite our disagreements, we, as a city, are a very unique group. I love everything about Olympia. I love everyone. He was here, and I know that we may disagree on these things, but I do believe that this is the right movement forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Green.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Payne, and thank you to my fellow council members for sharing your thoughts on this. The issues that inspired folks to bring this initiative forward and that inspired folks to come out tonight are all very real and incredibly complex. There's absolutely too many people in our community struggling to stay afloat. There's absolutely an affordability crisis in our entire region, not just in Olympia. And there are absolutely employers who do not treat their workers with dignity or respect, and who find countless ways to exploit workers to maximize their profits. And there are absolutely employers, I would say disproportionately local, who care deeply for their workers and treat them with the dignity and respect that they deserve. They pay fairly, they build schedules and work environments that work with workers to balance their work, life, and health. While this initiative targets one type of employers, it will have significant impact to all of our local employers and our entire community. This initiative lays out one path for how to protect workers from unfair and unsafe work practices. Whether or not it's the right path for our city is what I believe everyone in our city should have a say in. The county elections team stopped verifying signatures at 5796, but if I, just using the general math, about half of the signatures were accepted and rejected, using that math, I would assume around 6,600 of our city's voters signed in support of this initiative. That's a significant number, and it's a clear indicator that our community wants to work on this. But for me, 6,600 votes would not get someone elected to a four-year position on this council, and I don't believe it's enough to say an initiative like this that could have such, essentially, permanence should be enacted. Something of this magnitude should be a community decision, not a council decision. So that's why, for me, tonight, I'll be voting to send it to the ballot.
Thank you very much. There is so much to say, and I have jotted it all down, and, yes, and I will do my best to get it all out in an organized way, but it may be a bit scattered and all over the place because there are a lot of important points that need to be made. The first thing I want to say, though, is that you heard it multiple times up here from my council colleagues, is that there's sort of a rejection of this idea of this being a binary thing. You're either for workers, or you are not. And that is just simply a false choice, and it's just not true whether or not we care about workers. We all do. And Councilmember Green, you just said it so eloquently, you know, a moment ago in your opening comments, that there are a number of issues that this community faces that we've attempted to address as a body, that we continue to work on to move the needle so that more people can really have opportunity to succeed. So what I will say is that this proposed initiative, I don't disagree with the spirit of the proposed initiative. I disagree with how it is written. I disagree with the details. As the expression goes, "the devil is in the details." The reason that this ballot initiative is coming before us tonight is because the City Council made a decision last year not to adopt a minimum wage ordinance before the end of the year last year. And we made that decision instead to propose doing research and policy analysis on the Workers' Bill of Rights in lieu of passing a minimum wage ordinance by the end of last year. And the reason we did that is because just as of last week, when we were in the study session, we had all of these questions that we needed answers to. And here we are several months later, and we still don't have the answers to those questions. And I, as the Mayor Protem said, there are basic questions. What are the current economic conditions of the City of Olympia? Why are we making this decision, and for whom? How many will it impact? Who will be affected? What are the consequences that we foresee, and what are the ones that maybe we're not thinking about? Those are the kinds of questions that we just don't have the answers to because we haven't done our homework as a city. And when we haven't done our homework, we shouldn't be passing policies that touch upon You know, business owners and nonprofits, nonprofit staff in specific, are constituents too. And there is this idea that somehow you're either for the business owner and business, or you're for the worker, and those are your only options. But that is not accurate. We have a responsibility to all constituents in this community, and that includes business owners, that includes nonprofit staff. And for, from what I can see, is that we are saying that we should agree to those who signed, we should listen to the voices of those who signed on to the petition to put this in front of the City Council for a decision to be on the ballot. And for that, I say, what about the people that did not sign that? Where is their voice in this process? And I don't understand why we're here tonight to make a decision as a body when we have not heard by the thousands of the constituents who do not agree with this proposal. And so I find that to be an equity issue, specifically for me, as that's something that's very important to me. Another equity issue is that what exactly is equitable about small, medium, and large employers all paying the same fine, which is what this initiative does? That's what it says, that you will all pay the same fine. There's nothing equitable about that. You know, I also feel that, you know, when you're doing scheduling, when you talk about predictive scheduling, when a person takes a job at any level, regardless of the kind of job, they either agree to a fixed schedule, depending on that job, Monday through Friday, eight to five, or they have some sort of flexibility, or they agree to some sort of combination of both. What this initiative does, and what you're asking us to do, is you're saying, "Hey, government, be in the interview room," and you make the decision as to whether or not that employee should have that opportunity to determine what their work schedule should be in the interview room by government mandate. And that is something I'm just not comfortable with agreeing to. You know, Olympia is not Seattle. You can't take what is happening in Seattle and just plop it here in Olympia and think that that's going to work. And that is what I feel is happening with this process, is that, again, we haven't done our homework. We're taking what, another large city that is much more, much more larger than the City of Olympia, and trying to apply those policies to a small, much smaller jurisdiction. We heard earlier that there are, you know, other issues, things like civil action. So an employer who essentially has to be put on the defense to defend themselves, and if you are a small business, and an employer makes an accusation... you are a small business and an employer makes an accusation that you have violated the language in this initiative, it's possible that that employer has to go to court. And what if they can't afford to fight an employee in court for months and months and months? What's their alternative? To settle? And they settle without a verdict of whether or not they are guilty of violating the language in the initiative. And what does that mean? That they are responsible for compensating this person regardless of the outcome. It doesn't matter. They are on the hook for that as a small business owner. That is not something that I can support. When I met with, you know, the United Food and Commercial Worker Representatives behind this initiative, in the initial proposal, there was a proposal to have an Office of Municipal Labor Standards. And I was very honest in that meeting from the very beginning, that we are not in a place in our budget where we, as a city, can have an Office of Municipal Labor Standards. So, at that time, they said, okay, we understand that. And, you know, we, these are the things that are more so a priority for us. The minimum wage increase, predictive scheduling, safe working conditions, those are the things that are priority for us. And, you know, the Office of Municipal Labor Standards is not one of those priorities. Well, this initiative effectively, essentially creates an Office of Municipal Labor Standards because the city is now tasked with all of this enforcement, and staff have to do that work, which means it puts that burden on the council to figure out how to include that in the city's budget. It is not something that is doable at this time for the city of Olympia, which is another reason I can't support it. I heard a moment ago that there were, that there wasn't a housing shortage in Olympia, that we have a wage issue. Well, city of Olympia needs over 12,000 units of housing by 2045. So, that's just simply not accurate. We do have a housing shortage. And we also have, you know, you know, an issue with people making, making a living, being able to get by. And I'm really concerned about this idea that the issue of homelessness is being sort of put into a box as the only thing that contributes to homelessness is the fact that people don't make a livable wage. It's a significant one. It's not the only one. There are several factors that go into why people are homeless. We see it every day. We deal with the issue of homelessness as a city, and we know that there are multiple factors that contribute to that particular issue. It is not one thing that leads to the issue of homelessness. And so, that is also something that I just think is, frankly, a deliberate distortion of reality. And so, I just can't be supportive of this tonight because I find that there are a number of things in it that are problematic. It's not written well. It defines large, small, and medium employers at the end of the initiative instead of in the beginning, the way well-written legislation should be written. There are a number of problems with this initiative. And I'm really, really concerned about the impacts. Again, we didn't do our homework. What is going to happen to the businesses in the city of Olympia? I've spoken with those who own restaurants, who say, you know, I may have to lay people off. I may not be able to apply, you know, give health insurance to my employees because of this decision. And that is a reality. And what we are talking about, if you look at the language up here, it is concerning labor standards for certain employees. So, please understand that there will be those who will benefit from this action, and there will be those who do not. And it is just not a reality to sit here and say that it is gonna be beneficial to the majority of people in this community, because I don't think it will. And so, I will not be supporting adopting it as an ordinance to the city tonight. So, with that, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, yes?
Thank you, Mayor.
I think I just want to respond, since you called me out.
Sure. Councilmember Cooper.
And I want to just, I'll just keep lifting up what Councilmember Vanderpoel said, because this is the reason I wanted to do this tonight, is because we need to have the most, continue to demonstrate that Olympia is how you do civil discourse in these United States. So, I think at some point in the future, I'd love to debate you about the cause of homelessness. You know, the other conditions that manifest as a result of people being short on money manifest in our face sometimes around addiction and mental health, but the vast majority of homeless people, we don't see. They are not the thing that we are spending the most of our time dealing with. And I would love to have that discussion in a much bigger and deeper way with you, because I've been doing 15 years of homeless and housing policy in this community, and I just don't agree. This is a money problem. I also think that there's a couple folks that mentioned a December proposal that did not exist. And I want to clarify that. So, there was a discussion at this council about whether or not to have a conversation with the community. There was never a proposal. There was just a discussion with a recommendation from the Finance Committee to go out into the community and have a discussion. And we tried to separate wage and fair, and the rest of the Bill of Rights, maybe, you know, at our own detriment, you know, in hindsight. But there was no proposal. I also want to make it really clear in Stacy's slides, that none of the scheduling rules apply to large companies over 500, and that the language around enforcement says that the city is authorized. There is no language that says the city is mandated to do any enforcement at all. The language on Page Five, under the Enforcement Section, says the city is authorized. So, I think that we could do he said, he said all night long, but I felt the need, just because of the housing issue that you brought up. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any additional comments? I will add that under the Section Three of rulemaking, within 120 days after the effective date, the city must adopt rules and procedures to implement and ensure compliance to this chapter. So, while it says we're authorized to do it in another section, we will, if this is passed, be required to do some sort of rulemaking in making this enforceable and implemented through the community. So, there are some must and requirement languages in this initiative. Are there any additional questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, we have a motion in a second to approve a resolution enacting the Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative Ordinance concerning labor standards for certain employees as part of the Olympia Municipal Code. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Motion fails for three. Okay. Councilmember Green.
Can I make an additional motion?
Sure.
I'd move to approve a resolution sending the initiative proposal to the November general election ballot for a vote by the people.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move to approve a resolution sending the Proposed Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative Ordinance concerning labor standards for certain employees to the ballot for a vote by the people. All right. And we have a second. So, I have a few things that I need to do before we take that vote. So, I will do that now. Okay. So, just a few things. The reason tonight that we typically allow 30 minutes of time for public comment, and then we get on with business, and then we go back to public comment and allow those, the remainder of those who didn't have time to speak in the first 30 minutes to speak. The reason we ran through that and went well over an hour is because the moment we vote, if this passes and goes to the ballot, we will not be able to discuss this any further in the council chambers tonight, because it will be considered a ballot measure for the general election. And in public comment, you cannot speak in support or opposition to a candidate or ballot measure. So, once we take this vote, if it passes, there is no further discussion on this issue. So, that was the reason that we had you all speak regardless of time until we got through all of those who signed up for public comment. Also, just a reminder that communication with city staff, with council members, we will not be able to respond to your emails in our official capacity as a city organization in the event that this passes, because it is, it will pertain to a ballot measure that will be on the ballot in November. So, again, the council and the staff will not be able to respond to meeting requests or emails related to the Workers' Bill of Rights. As you heard, the mayor pro tem said earlier, we will have to pause our work, the scope of work on the Workers' Bill of Rights research and a policy analysis work that the Finance Committee directed our staff to do, and that the rest of council was in support of. That work will have to pause, because we will not be able to provide city resources to an issue that is on the ballot in November, again, in the event that this passes. So, that work will have to pause until after the general election. So, again, we have a motion to approve a resolution sending the Proposed Workers' Bill of Rights Initiative Ordinance concerning labor standards for certain employees for the ballot for a vote by the people. And we have a second. All those in...
Discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sure. Discussion.
So, as somebody who came up as a low-wage hourly worker, was lucky to have a few years of a union career, and then returned to low-wage hourly work, from a long line of low-wage workers and cousins who are low-wage workers, and two of our children who are low-wage workers, I just want to tell you, so, we're gonna stand down as a council, and that means we're gonna rely on the community to carry this between now and November, because this body won't be able to act. But I'm counting on you, and I'm with you.
Thank you. Additional comments? I will just say that this is an opportunity to hear more of our community's voice around this issue. And so, I think that that is a good thing. And so, we should all take time to reflect on that as a community and really dig into what we think this will do for ourselves collectively as a community, and what it will mean to us individually and for our own households, because it's a very important issue. So, any additional comments? Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. So, that concludes our business for tonight. So, we will move on to council reports. I will begin with the mayor's report, which is that I do not have a report. So, I will start to my left with Councilmember Cooper.
Councilmember Green said we should ask for a recess, but I'm gonna go on the trend and say, I have nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
To be fair, I just asked to pause. But, yeah, nothing to report, Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem, when?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Finance Committee met last night, and most of our evening was a, an initial look at the capital facilities plan proposal for the next six years. And there were three items in that proposal that we thought will merit additional council consideration. And I just wanted to daylight them here. We have months of work ahead of us. But the first one is keeping track of our commitment to develop sidewalks and other multimodal transportation infrastructure. So, we want to have sort of an accounting and a plan to know how that's going. The second one is, the Olympia Fire Department has a capital plan proposal that involves both remodeling stations and adding a new station, as well as replacing fire engines. And we should have a conversation, because it's kind of a big-ticket item. And the third thing is a new solid waste facility on Carpenter Road. And again, that's tens of millions, so we should give that some careful consideration, because that would be part of our plan.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? Seeing none. Councilmember Vanderpoel.
I have nothing to report. Next week, we'll have quite a few items to report on them.
Thank you. Councilmember Madron.
We won't have reports next week, because it's a study session, but nothing to report.
To be, to be fair, originally wasn't one, so. All right. Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to mention that the council has voted to send this to a vote of the people. And there's another step regarding the for and against committees that perhaps you might want to update the chamber on.
Thank you for that reminder. So, council will have to seek volunteers to serve on the for and against committee now that it is going to be a ballot measure in the general election in November. So, the committee is responsible for preparing a statement for and against the initiative measure and a rebuttal statement. So, each committee will have no more than three members. If you are interested in serving on that committee, please email the city council by Friday, July 25. Council will be taking formal action to appoint committee members at our next business meeting on Monday, August 4. Thank you for that reminder. Any additional comments? Okay. Thank you. With no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.